All right. So, welcome, everybody, to the Portsmouth School Committee meeting of Tuesday, May 13th. If you'd please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance. And tonight, we'd like to honor a former principal of Hathaway, who served for 25 years, Mr. Lawrence Jones, who passed away recently. So the moment of silence will be for him.
Aye. Pledge of allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it spans, one nation, under our power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Prior to this public session, we had an executive session. No votes were taken. May I have a motion, please, to seal the executive session minutes of May 13th, 2025?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous, 7-0. Please let the record reflect that all school committee members are present. If we do have an emergency, which we hope, obviously, we won't, we have an exit door here, two over there, and we meet over at the school admin building and await instructions. So, a couple of updates. On April 29th, the school department presented its upcoming fiscal year budget to the town council. They voted to approve the budget as presented, which was wonderful. Last night, there was a motion that could have substantially reduced the budget. They were talking around 300,000. Luckily, though, I think the town councillors recognized that it was a little late in the day, and we encouraged them to participate in our budget process. We have public hearings on it in the months leading up to our finalization of the budget, and I think we'll work on getting them a little bit more involved last year. So, the budget remained as it was approved. The next and final vote on the budget is in June, over June 11th, I believe.
June 11th.
And Town Council President, Mr. Hamilton, suggested that it would be in the Town Council chambers. So, we'll wait for that. Lots of end-of-year, end-of-year school events that I know I and other school committee members enjoy attending. Myself and Mr. Ferber attended the World Language Honor Society, which was really encouraging to see how many students are earning honors in multiple languages at the high school. Then Ms. McDay and myself were at the National Honor Society induction and recognition of seniors, which was, again, an awesome thing. And then finally, we had the last learning walk of the year, right? Which was at Portsmouth High School on April 30th. And I'd really like to congratulate the high school team on an excellent job in terms of a lot of the work that they've been doing. I know Mr. Fox and I were able to attend that. Mr. Ferber, Ms. McDay, Mr. Fox, anybody want to add a comment on that? Nope, we all enjoyed it. Okay. And then, the Rhode Island Association of School Committees held its annual meeting May 3rd, 2025. There was an awesome presentation by Mario Carreno, both a Lincoln School Committee member and a person who worked at RIDE, looking at school enrollment. Highly recommend people taking a look at that presentation if you weren't able to attend. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Ferber for having over 300 hours of... 304, just snuck right in there, of professional development. So, congratulations for that. You were one of two people, I think, that had that higher level. So, yeah, well, congratulations. The statewide study commission wrapped up its work. I put the two reports under backup. We've already passed two resolutions in support of recommendations coming out of that Transportation Study Commission, and the final one is on the agenda for your review tonight. So that wraps up my chair's report. Moving on to subcommittee updates. I'll take the first one, which was personnel. And the two contracts under Business A and B tonight were reviewed by the Personnel Subcommittee and moved forward to full committee for consideration unanimously. Policy, Ms. McDay.
Thank you. The Policy Subcommittee met on May 5th, and we discussed several policies. First of all, Policy JLG, which had to do with the education of homeless children and youth. We decided to return to the Subcommittee for additional revisions. Policy GBGA, which addresses protection against bloodborne pathogens. You'll see on the agenda later tonight. Similarly, with some policies having to do with dismissal and cancellation and inclement weather, which are also appear on the agenda later today. Productive meeting.
And final policy, final read for cellphone?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I had my mic off. And final read for the cellphone policy for next year as well. Okay. Moving on, we had the negotiations, first meeting of the Negotiations Subcommittee on May 5th. This is to start negotiations with Council 94 for the upcoming year. And that's covered under Exec, so there's not a lot to report back there. All right. And now, the reason you guys are all here, and the thing that excites us most as school committee members, and I think district staff, we'd like to recognize the Portsmouth High School Model UN, Mr. Cassidy.
Is it a button? There, should be on. I don't know if I need a microphone, but I'll take one. I will fight my inner demons and keep this as short as I can. I want to thank you for the opportunity to come in and tell you a little bit about what these kids have accomplished this year. I tried to keep my head as low as possible, knowing that we had a very young team this year, with good experienced leadership, but not quite sure what was coming up from behind. As you will see, they exceeded expectations. So, you've got another great quality group that I expect big things from next year and going forward. So, once again, you know, when we, I was just having the conversation outside. In 2009, when we started this, when we restarted the program, I had a half dozen kids, and we were kind of learning as we went into the first conference what we were supposed to do. I have very little control over this now, because they really teach their own. So what you're going to see, I just want to stress, this is all beyond their school day. All the work you see, all the time they put in, all the effort, most of the money that comes in comes from them, because this, this is built a life of its own. And I couldn't be prouder. And I'm happy to turn it over to the leadership squad, the four girls that have made this year really happen. Elena, Heather, Ashley, Sophie.
Good evening, everyone, esteemed committee members. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Sophia Turner, and this was only my second year participating in Model UN. But I can say without a doubt, it was one of the best years of my life. And it's really just been a game changer and has truly moved me and inspired me so much. So this year, despite only being my second year in Model UN, I found myself in a mentorship role, very graciously granted by Mr. Cassidy, because he saw my interest and my newfound passion and love for the world of Model UN. So, for me, being a mentor meant helping my fellow classmates and underclassmen through, you know, our legendary position paper pizza parties and our post-committee debriefs, especially for those who had a really rough committee session. It happens to all of us. And also, you know, just simple parley pro lessons. And while I was giving this advice, I was also learning more about myself and what Model UN truly meant. And Model UN stands for service, community, commitment, diplomacy, dedication, ambition, and just so much more. And it's truly brought a new level of motivation and aspirations to me in my life. And, you know, I had an original plan for after high school, but just being in Model UN for two short years, it's felt like a lifetime, and it's really moved me to pursue international politics in the future. So, next year, you'll see me in DC at Georgetown studying international politics. And I have all of it to owe to Mr. Cassidy and the team. It's truly been a life-changing experience, I'm not exaggerating. So even though I was fairly inexperienced, someone took a chance on me. And thank you so much, Mr. Cassidy. So, with that being said, I'd like to talk about how our school year began this year. So, we started the year off looking at some conferences that we decided on last year. And those included UCMUN at UConn, Empire Monk at NYU. We also hoped to hold Patriot Month, which we succeeded in, and Elena will talk about later. We also looked at Bosman at Boston University, Wham-Munk in Washington DC at George Washington, and we also looked at Boston College, which was staffed by two of our previous captains from last year, Michaela and Kira Boxel. Unfortunately, we were not able to go to Wham-Munk this year, which I was very disappointed in. But I definitely hope to see the team there next year, specifically at Georgetown, for Naimon. But with that being said, we definitely had a busy year ahead of us. So to prepare for that, we worked on membership and fundraising. So, membership, we started off the year at the annual PHS Club Fair. That was very successful. We had many prospective members that were interested in the club. And it's no, it's, everyone knows that Model UN is the best club at the high school. So, that was definitely reiterated in the results we saw and the interest. And we also welcomed numerous members throughout the year for our various cohorts, which was awesome. And I'd really like to shout out the students that were able to step in very last minute. And I mean, like, last minute, like, two days before we departed. Those students really brought so much to the table, despite their inexperience, despite not really knowing what Model UN really stood for or what it was. So, I really want to thank those students as well, and they know who they are. Besides that, you know, for membership, we look for people to represent our entire school community. So that looks like having people from every grade, which we succeeded in, and having people with different perspectives, different opinions, and, but also like the same motivations. So, leadership, diplomacy, you know, ambition, everyone represented that. And they truly met the high expectations we have set. And they really represented Portsmouth, like beautifully, outside of it. I hope you are also as proud as I am as how well our delegates did in representing Portsmouth and our school district outside of our home area. So, with that being said, we had both, you know, a busy year ahead, and we had some strong members. And we had 31 members total that participated in at least one conference or so. So, it was definitely a very amazing group, very numerous. We were very big and, you know, scary to the others. So, that was definitely something that really kept us going. And also, we worked on fundraising. And fundraising is really what makes, you know, the wheels spin and the cogs turn. Because Model UN is definitely not a cheap, you know, endeavor. You have to pay for the delegation fees, registration, hotels, food, the awesome merch tables that are very, very appealing to high schoolers, and so much other more costs go into it, so much planning. So to make it as affordable and accessible as we could, we really focused on fundraising, specifically at Clements just down the hill. Our bake sales were legendary. Yep, those are on the first slide. We held a lot over the summer, so we were pre-planning before the next school year. And we held a lot through the year as well. And those really helped make sure that, even though it's still pretty expensive, averaging like 300 per conference, we still had as many people as possible able to chip in. So, yeah, we had a very successful start of the year with a lot of conferences to look forward to, a lot of new members to bolster our ranks, and some money in our pockets to really get the wheels turning. So, with that being said, I'd like to turn it to Ashley, who will talk about some of our first few conferences. Thank you.
Hi. As Sophie mentioned, my name is Ashley Murphy. I'm also one of the graduating captains this year. And before I start, in addition to being captain, I'm also the social media manager. So I can't, you know, speak without shouting out the Instagram and telling you guys to follow Port Patriots Month on Instagram. But on a serious note, I joined Model UN when I was a freshman at freshman orientation. Very much had no idea what I was going into. It's super complicated, and I definitely walked into that, well, not walked, it was online. So, I tuned into the first conference, very much didn't know what I was doing. And now, it's just been, as Mr. Cassidy mentioned, it's, I put a lot of time into it, and it's something I do all the time, and I really enjoy it. And when I think about high school, it's really just invaluable without the experiences that I've had from Model UN. So, to avoid being emotional, I'll, I'll keep this a little brief. But I just wanted to thank you guys for being able to approve these trips. And thank you to Mr. Cassidy for everything he's done to the program. Thank you to my parents as well. All the, yes, for, yeah. Definitely not easy to let your kid go on a weekend trip to, you know, New York City in the middle of November. So, yeah, props to them. But also the other students that made this program everything that it was. I've had a lot of fun teaching everyone, as well as talking with them during conferences. They really made everything, whether I've roomed with them in hotel rooms or, you know, as Sophie mentioned, those position paper parties. It was just really an amazing experience. They really made everything what it was. So thank you guys also. But, so on a serious note, or well, not serious note, I guess, talking about some of the conferences that we've done earlier this year. So, we started off in October with Wheeler High School Model UN. So this is a smaller conference, it's only one day. So we took a smaller group, just because of availability. A lot of them were very new. And so, it was kind of a cool experience for a lot of those kids to kind of see Model UN for the first time on a small scale. And despite that, we still were able to get some awards. So congratulations to Sophia and May Pacico for winning outstanding delegates in their rooms. It was really amazing. Then in November, we had two conferences. So we started off with UConn, which, again, is another learning conference. But we didn't really, you know, as you can tell, there's definitely a lot more than a smaller group here. Most of them were beginners, which is really cool. You kind of step into those rooms, and a lot of those other kids are either their first time in a crisis room or their first time in a Model UN in general. And so, it's a really great experience for them to really get to know, see them. I know I myself was able to pop into a couple rooms, and I was just really proud to see everyone being able to speak and contributing, because I know it's something that I definitely didn't do on my first conference as a freshman. So it was really cool, because we also do have a lot of freshmen now on the team. So it's just amazing. But I also wanted to congratulate Heather for winning Best Delegate. Camden for winning Outstanding, and as well as May Pacico, I don't know where she is. For also winning Outstanding. It was just really an amazing conference, we were able to bring home some awards. Props to Camden and May, also their first conferences. So, it was really cool. And then, at the end of November, we were able to go to Empire Monk, which is what NYU's Model UN Conference is called. So this one's really cool, it's a four-day conference in New York City. So you're really in the moment. Because of this, we generally bring a smaller group, but it was still super successful. It was really fun. We were able to see a lot of the big touristy stuff, it's like Rockefeller Center and Times Square. But probably one of the cooler things is we did get a tour of the UN headquarters, which is always really cool. I was able to do it my sophomore year, and it was just really amazing. Unfortunately, the General Assembly was not in session during this time, but we did get to see the room. We got to take pictures of it now, because they're not in session. But it was really cool. You can see the Security Council Chamber on the photo, as well as the entire team. You definitely see that background, it's very nice. And then, I think, yeah, so we have a couple more photos. If you look at the one on the right, yeah, that's right for everyone. That's the top of our hotel, you can really see all the captains and Mr. Cassidy. I thought it was a really great photo. But NYU was a lot of fun, I think. Yeah, yeah, so it was definitely one of the highlights of the trip. You can see, it's really kind of cool to see all of the different parts of it. On the tour, they walk you through what all the chambers are, what all the committees are. It's just kind of cool, because those are the same ones that you're walking into in Model UN, as well as what are the pillars of what makes up the UN. And they, they talk about those goals that they have, that they set in, you know, they, you can see the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And so I think that was one of the more profound things that I really enjoy about the UN, is seeing those and just seeing, it gives you a lot of hope for the future. So with that being said, I want to pass it off to Elena, who's going to talk about Patriot Month that we held in January.
Hi, everyone. Thank you to Ashley for introducing me. I joined Model UN in my sophomore year. And like my fellow captains, Model UN has offered so many invaluable experiences, whether it's meeting new people from different schools, all across the world even, and to just getting the opportunity to deeply research different topics that are incredibly relevant to the world today. I would say that Model UN has been something that I will forever remember, and hopefully I can continue something similar in the future. But I would also really like to thank the school committee for making all this possible, whether it's approving trips or just having opportunities to go out and try these different things. It's been really wonderful, so thank you to all of you. But one of the highlights this year was January, where we held our first high school-led conference ever in our team's history. It's called Patriot Month 1. And after several years of trying to put it together, I think in the last couple years, we always had plans, but it just never, ever happened. We were finally able to run our conference. So, we were able to welcome schools like East Greenwich, Lincoln, Wheeler. And even though we had some troubles, like half of the people dropping out the day of, or even the day before, we were able to really host a one-day conference that was really rewarding. So, whether people were in rooms like dune and thinking about, even if it was like a fictional world, thinking about issues like climate change and the effects of just mass religion and different movements in society, to thinking about, sorry, erupting volcanoes and flooding. I would say that everyone really had the opportunity to just engage in conversations with different people. And something that's really important today in society is just thinking about how we can communicate with each other, how we can inform each other to have informed and knowledgeable dialogues. So it was really wonderful to see all of that come to fruition. And so none of that would have been possible without all the PHS staff, people like Ms. Patricia Wensel in the front office, who helped us set up everything, helped us make notepads like the day before and teaches how to bind them all. And Mr. Cassidy, who gave an amazing opening speech, and, which was pretty long, but that was okay. But, yeah, and thank you, of course, to my fellow captains who helped to make that happen. So hopefully, next year, even though I won't be majoring in international relations or doing any public policy, I'll be able to come back. So, kudos to our fellow team captains for next year, who are already planning Patriot Month 2. So, thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Heather Williams, and I have been a part of Portsmouth United Nations for three years now. I joined my sophomore year. Coming into high school, I didn't really know exactly what I wanted to do in life. I definitely wanted to explore my options, and this kind of club was so, almost career-based. It allowed me to not necessarily develop skills just for public relations or international relations, but also for skills that I'll need in the future. So, unlike some of my fellow captains, I chose to take a different path. I will be studying automotive engineering at Clemson University next year, but I will still keep the public speaking skills and the diplomatic connection skills that I've learned through my three years. I mean, beginning, I wasn't even really able to talk very well in front of a big group. But you know, here I am, three years later, talking in front of a whole bunch of adults, and I didn't even take, like, anything, my anxiety medicine, I'm fine. I cannot properly express how much this club has meant to me, as my other fellow captains have said. But I will do my best by continuing the story of our club success throughout the year. So, starting with Bosman and our spring portion of the conferences. It's the biggest conference of the year. I think we, it was around 4,000 kids, somewhere around there. So it's definitely a very intimidating conference for a lot of our delegates. It's also kind of what we move on, past our learning conferences at UConn or Wheeler. But it really gives the delegates a chance to kind of use what they've learned throughout the year and apply it in a bigger sense. And you get to meet kids from, not even us across the nation, like, there was kids from different countries, and you could definitely, like, interact with them. And it was really cool to see so many kids in the same place with the same desires. Personally, it's my favorite, and I know some people don't share that. But even despite its size, we did come home with one award. Chris Cox, who's not here, he was able to get diplomatic accommodation, which is really impressive considering the sheer size of the conference. So our next one, more pictures. I didn't add that picture, but that's Cassidy in his little George Washington outfit. But our next and our last one, and sadly, the last one for our seniors, was Eagle Month, put on by Boston College. I know Sophie said earlier, it's special to our hearts because two of our former captains, Kira and Michaela Boxel, participated in this, not as delegates as they did last year, but they were running the conference in their own respective rooms. So, it was really cool to see how our high school month has kind of transformed into their college month. It was a bit smaller in size, but we did compete against some very good high schools across the nation, some very elite private schools, and we came home with an astounding number of awards. So, okay. Huge congratulations to May Pacico as Best Delegate. Ashley Murphy and Chris Cox for both receiving an Outstanding Delegate Award. As well as Sophie Turner, Gavin Brayman, and Chloe Oliver, who all received honorable mentions. So as Cassidy says, every conference, and it's something I would like to reiterate, I'm so proud of each and every one of our delegates within this club, whether they won awards or not. I know I had difficulty in the beginning proving myself. And even when you don't come home with an award, it's definitely a hit to your conscience, a hit to your ego. But I know that these kids did as much as they did, as much as they could, and were really successful in their rooms. And even if they didn't get a piece of paper, I know that in my heart. But it's been a whirlwind for the past few years, and it's time for me and my fellow captains to hand over the reins to the next generation of leaders. But first, I would like to acknowledge the people who have stood by my side as captains of this team. Elena Sun and Ashley Murphy, who have put countless hours for this club and we will forever remember as we move on to our next pursuits in college, in colleges across the nation. I want to recognize Ashley Murphy for her role as leader, as well as her accomplishments as Best Delegate at Empire Monk and Outstanding Delegate at Eagle Month. And finally, to Elena Sun for her insurmountable role in hosting our very own Patriot Month. It was not an easy endeavor. But as sad as it might be, I'm very excited for the next years to come. And that is why I would like to formally invite Portsmouth Model United Nations' next captains, Ben Kayden, Gavin Brayman, who's sick and not here, and Gavin Corville, to talk about our future.
Thank you for the introduction, Heather. To touch upon my experiences in Model UN a little bit, I would be going into my third year this upcoming 2025, 2026 school year. And I remember my first conference at UConn two years ago now. I didn't speak a single time. And now, coming out into Eagle Month, our last conference, as was just discussed, I was out there, I was up front, I was talking to people. So it has truly helped me expand as a person, and my public speaking skills have improved immensely. So whether I was chilly in the UNICEF, talking about refugee children, or traveling back in time to be Napoleon's Minister of War, I've been able to experience many different scenarios, which allowed me to apply my own skills and truly helped me grow in this program.
Hello. Thank you to Gavin Corville and our previous captains for introducing us. My name is Ben Kayden, I am also a rising junior this year. I started, as well as Gavin Corville, with Model UN as a freshman. I didn't exactly know what to expect going into my freshman year. But thanks to the guidance and experience of our former captains, Michaela and Kira Boxel, and more experienced members of the team, our previous captains, I was able to learn and develop as a delegate, expand upon my public speaking skills, collaboration skills, understanding of facing different viewpoints on different subjects. And I would just really like to appreciate and thank Mr. Cassidy and our former captains for that. They've really helped me grow as a person and a student in and outside of committee session.
To touch upon our future as a club a little bit, I would like to talk about our plans for next, this upcoming Model UN season. Next year, we would like to expand upon the immense success that we found this year, bringing our returners as a more mature team, while also welcoming the new freshmen or any other new people who wish to experience what Model UN is all about. And we will continue our signature Boston conferences of Bosman and Eagle Month, while also allowing our returning members to attend NYU's Empire Monk in New York City. And of course, as mentioned before, we are already planning the second iteration of our own conference Patriot Month, where we hope to expand upon the ideas and the groundwork that was laid this year to improve the conference and make the best version of it yet, even though we have a second, it's only the second it's only the second one. We want to improve every year in every aspect of it.
And then, as well as that, with the support of all members and the support gained through our fundraisers, we know we will have another productive year of Model UN. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I know we have some certificates of recognition now to pass out. But just let me say here, on behalf of the whole school committee, how impressed and how impressive you all are as a group of students. As someone personally who spent their career teaching international relations and political science, to see the self-directed learning, that's really amazing for your years. And diplomacy and problem solving, whether you're going into automobile engineering or, you know, medicine or IR, those are invaluable skills. So, well done, well done. Other comments?
I just have a question for Dr. Cassidy. How do you encourage a freshman to consider participating in Model UN? Or if it's not a freshman, a sophomore, what do you do? Is it because you have a student in your history class that expresses interest, and you suddenly relate to them the benefits of Model UN? Or how do you get some of these people to opt to? Because you've got a, this is perhaps the largest, the largest class.
I think this is the biggest group I've ever had. And last year, I wasn't sure that we would have anything close to this size. We had a large recruitment class. I'd love to tell you, it's my cult of personality that starts with freshman year.
You know that's not the case.
It is not. I don't teach any freshmen. So, the hardest part for me is getting access to those kids, which is why you hear some of these kids that start sophomore year. And that's really about the first time they start to hear the rumors about what I am and who I am. It's generally positive, but I don't use hook or crook. What I generally try to do is use these guys as my conduits to them. It actually helps that we've started the club fair. And so, as kids are walking around, you just get a couple that, you know, they hear what this is, and they're not too intimidated by it. We will have freshmen that come in here, writing papers, doing research, and they'll bail on it, thinking that, well, this can't be any fun. The flip side of that is, as soon as they come back from their first conference, these kids are usually sold. So, that first conference, that first night, that first session, there's a lot of tears. There's a lot of frustration. There's a lot, "I'll never do this again." But by the end of Saturday, it all starts to turn around. The language starts to make sense. And we have, we have one of our old adages is, "None of this will make sense, what we're doing here. The only thing that's going to help you is that first conference." You get in the room, and then it starts to make sense, because everybody speaks the same language, and they're all the same wonderful level of nerd. And those are my favorite kids on the planet. And it builds on itself, and it keeps its own. And I've got a group of kids that quit after every conference, but come back by the next one, because they realize that as hard as it is, as stressful it is, they love it. And I wish I had better access, you know? I don't know if you guys saw that group of kids from Melville that were up here speaking at the last school committee meeting. I hit them up on the way out, like, "You got to come to me in about four years. I want to talk to you." Because that's where we start, and the talent is ingrained in this group. And what I love is that every single one of them has it in them, and they really just need the confidence. They walk into the room, and there's a whole group of kids that seem like they know it all, and they're capable of everything, and our kids have the tendency to lack confidence that way. And what I tell them is, there's not a single kid from one of these private schools that's better than what we have to offer. And they prove me right every time. What you saw here is just a small taste of it. And every year, they get a little bit more polished until they're finally ready, and then they leave me. And they go on to make Brown, or Michigan, or Clemson, or Georgetown a better place. And to be honest with you, that's exactly the way it should be. They outgrow what we have to offer, and then they go on to continue that process until they're going to be the ones running this system. And I can't wait for that.
I just want to say, you're going to make our society a better place, because all the skills you're developing, no matter what you study, these skills are so important, especially today in this divided society. So, please, thank you for doing what you did and continue that, like bridging differences with an ease of communication, which is so essential.
All right, Dr. Kenworthy.
Alrighty. So, we have certificates to give out. And we had a long list, as we mentioned. So, we tried to just take a quick attendance out there as people are coming. If I, if you arrive later and I don't call your name, just at the end. Okay, and if we're a little out of order, we'll figure it out. All right. All right, so first up, Camden Bannister. Elizabeth Karuba. Payton Court Staswick. Gavin Corville. Dylan Hong. Looks like we missed one there. Benjamin Kayden. Maggie Mullen. Fabio Muscianci. Chloe Olivera. Sabrina Ryan. Mark Schoen Cruz. Allison Schuster. Taylor Turner. And then our captains, Ashley Murphy. Elena Sun. Heather Williams. And Sophia Turner. Oh, I'm sorry. That's me, because she's checked off. I'm sorry, May. You got it there? Yeah. All right, May Pachico.
Had a squeeze in a bit. You got a bunch of back there, so look them all there. All right, I see cameras are down.
All right, congratulations, everyone. Great job.
So, I know you guys all thanked us, but honestly, you're the ones that are making it happen with your fundraisers, your great organization, all of those skills. So, keep it up, and we're happy to support you. So, if you'd like to stay and watch local politics in action with our meeting, you're more than welcome, but you probably have dinner and homework and everything else. So, thank you for coming and sharing with us what you've done, and we're really happy to have the occasion to applaud you. So, well done. We'll take a minute break. Has just died on me here, so we're going to go down over there. All right, Ms. Rhodes, is there any public comment online? No, no public comment here. Moving on to the superintendent's update, Dr. Kenworthy.
Great. So, first up, I have personnel updates since our last meeting. It has been, I'm going over a month since our last meeting, because we had the town budget presentation in between, but not a lot of personnel updates. I have one new hire to announce, Bethany Gunkals, a clerical B position at Portsmouth Middle School. And we did receive a few resignations. Lisa Goodwin, Assistant Principal for Teaching and Learning at, oh, that should say Portsmouth Middle School, is, has announced she's leaving us as of the end of the school year. And then, two general school aides at Melville, Heather Seabird and Kelly Gill. And then, we had a few final spring coaching packets that I could approve once all paperwork was in. Jacob Cudier, a volunteer baseball coach at Portsmouth High School. Robert Campion, assistant baseball coach at Portsmouth Middle School. And John Hamilton, track and field head coach for Portsmouth Middle School, just finalizing that agreement that Mr. Hamilton there has worked out for our middle school track athletes. Any questions on personnel?
Seeing none.
Great. So, on to district updates since our last meeting. Started the schools. Hathaway wanted to highlight their STEAM Week, which was recently held, where students dove into hands-on outdoor activities during unified art classes and recess. Each day introduced exciting real-world roles such as science, technology, engineering, and environment in action. On Monday, highlights were nature detectives and weather watchers. Tuesday, code commanders. On Wednesday, builders and tinkerers became rigamaging engineers and flight engineers. And on Friday, students dressed as their favorite dream STEAM career. Hathaway also recently invited parents and community members to share information on health and wellness careers during health classes. Guests included a school adjustment counselor, a psychologist, a doctor, an art therapist, an arborist, a farmer, and a yoga instructor. I believe in one of the photos there, we have Mr. Whipple, who is an arborist, as he digs into the world of trees with the Little Leaf Learners. Over at Melville, the Anchored for Life team leaders recently led an amenity drive to collect essential items for those in need with participation from the entire school. The effort showed how students at Melville came together to care for each other and support the wider community. And then, Melville also celebrated a STEAM Week. Students there explored hands-on activities throughout the school day that sparked creativity, curiosity, and critical thinking. Each day focused on a different STEAM theme, giving students a wide variety of engaging learning experiences. The week wrapped up also with a career day, filling Melville with little engineers, doctors, nurses, scientists, and many more inspiring professions. And Melville, as I'm sure Hathaway does as well, wanted to give a shout out to science coach Margie Brennan for her leadership in planning and coordinating this amazing week. Over at Portsmouth Middle School, they wanted to report that RAI CAS testing has concluded, with just a few math makeups to complete at this point. And students in grades five and eight will be moving on to take the state science assessment this week. And the middle school wanted to shout out all students who have worked extremely hard to show what they know and can do. Portsmouth High School has held several end-of-year award ceremonies already, including the Film Festival, the PHSO Book Awards, National Artist Society Induction Ceremony, World Language Journal Society, and more. The school administration is looking forward to continuing to celebrate the many successes that students have had over the 2024-25 school year. As we heard earlier, PHS also hosted a learning walk for district leaders, highlighting the integrated support systems that have been implemented. The walk featured the High School Patriot Block Intervention Period, the Therapeutic Academic Program, or TAP, and the new Academic Support Center, with additional emphasis on in-class supports that are currently being used. Advanced Placement Testing is also underway at the high school, and students have been well-prepared for these important exams. And we look forward to celebrating their learning when we receive the scores later in the fall. A few things that I wanted to highlight since our last meeting. I did have my shadow days for the spring at Melville, Hathaway, and PHS. So, on April 22nd, over at Melville, I spent the morning in Ms. Jardine's first-grade classroom on May 2nd. I was in a fourth-grade classroom at Hathaway with Ms. Phelan and Ms. Hontoon. And on May 9th, I was in junior classes at Portsmouth High School. Thank you to all the students who allowed me to shadow them on these days. And then, in the afternoon, I was able to hold open hours for staff members who wanted to pop in. So, I had some great conversations on all those visits as well. I also wanted to thank the staff at Portsmouth this week, particularly Host Conley Zanny and Jim Knott, where I was a featured guest on April 25th. Wanted to highlight Staff Appreciation Week. So, last week, across the nation, we celebrated Staff Appreciation Week in K-12 education. Each of our schools had their own celebrations and recognitions, coordinated along with their respective parent-teacher groups. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank and recognize the hard-working staff that we have in place in the Portsmouth School Department. Portsmouth High School just wanted to announce officially, we know where they are in the, it's typically a 10-year cycle. So, we knew these visits were coming up, but we received the official notice from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, or NIASC. So, they are scheduled. Their larger decennial accreditation visit will take place in March of 2028. But a feature that they've recently added is what they call Collaborative Conference. So, this is kind of a smaller version, one-to-two-day event to help prepare for the larger visit. This will take place in March of 2026, so that'll be within the next school year. And I'm sure we'll start to hear more about those details from the high school. Lastly, I just wanted to mention the end-of-year dates that are fast approaching. I think we can hopefully, without jinxing anything, officially say, our last school day will be on June 18th. We don't anticipate any weather events from here on out. So, we will, we will end on the day that we have set currently in the school calendar on June 18th. And then, there is a link available, we'll post it on our website, that just includes all of the end-of-year celebrations coming up at each of our schools. And of course, the culminating event will be the graduation for the Portsmouth High School class of two. And of course, the culminating event will be the graduation for the Portsmouth High School class of 2025 on June 6th. That concludes my district updates. Are there any questions?
I think it would be really nice if we could have like a doodle poll or something going out Ms. Rhodes. So I, I think it would be lovely if we could at least get one or two. I mean, I know we all attend graduation, but to get one or two of us at the pre-K, one or two at the grade four stepping up in the promotional ceremony. You know, just, just to kind of show support for those end-of-year school events. Because this is the second year for the pre-K, right? And how many for the Melville third year for that? So maybe we could just see who's available to go and, and just get, get, make sure that we attend those as well. So we'd sign up for that.
We will do that. All right. So lastly then, just we've been trying to use our meetings this year to check in on various district goals as they come up. So for this meeting, it'll come up later in the business agenda. But we will be discussing, we have for your review and possible action, a timeline for the development of our next five-year capital plan. We're at the point where we have to start getting ready for that process. And that will align with Goal Three, Key Actions and Benchmark Number Four on our district goals. All right, we'll cover that again in the business agenda.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Rhodes, just a shout out for having all the, the linked items here on the agenda. I think that helps the community follow that well. So to the extent that we can do that, that's a wonderful thing to do. Okay.
Had a good month between
Right.
last meeting and this one to prepare. So yeah, we were looked at each other a few days ago like, oh, we actually have everything pretty much in.
Good. Well, awesome. Can I have a motion, please, for the approval of School Committee Amendments, April 6th? I'm sorry, April 8th Executive Session and April 8th Regular Session?
Moved second.
Any changes, corrections, additions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Seven zero. Motion for consent agenda.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Seven zero.
For discussion and action on the contract renewal for our network manager.
Second.
For discussion, Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you. So this is a contract renewal for Jacob Karen. He is our network manager in our IT department. He's a longtime district employee for us. He's come up through, originally was a Council 94 member in the tech department. Been network manager now for, I believe this is his second, if not third, contract. Does an outstanding job. So this is a three-year contract renewal for him.
Seeing no discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Seven zero. B, please.
I move for discussion and action on contract renewal for the operations manager.
Second.
For discussion, Dr. Kenworthy.
This is a contract renewal for Rachel Marciano, our District Operations Manager, which oversees many functions for us. She is our primary contact with first student. Our bus company, Chart Wells, for food services. Most of the public interacts with her through the facility scheduling process. And then her, when she's not doing any of those, her other main function is just helping wherever she can within our facilities department. Rachel as well is a longtime district employee who started as a Council 94 member and has worked way up to this position. Believe this is her second contract for this position and also a three-year contract renewal.
Any questions? She's doing an excellent job on the District Building Committee, too.
Yes, that as well. I'm sure I left out a few things.
Getting, keeping us on track there. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Seven zero. Thank you.
I move for discussion and action to unrestrict $340,000 of general fund, fund balance money restricted to the OPEB trust.
Second.
For discussion. And now these next three items are all kind of part of the same package. So maybe we could discuss it all and then go through the, the voting motions.
And I'll turn things over to Mr. Duro for more details. But as, as you mentioned, Dr. Colton, C, D, and E all relate together. It's really leading up to that last vote that you'll take on item E, which will identify the $900,000 that was in our agreement with the town, the amount of money on the school department side that we are contributing for the Portsmouth High School roof renovation.
Do we need, Attorney Carol, do we need a motion for discussion for the other two so we can just kind of go back and forth? Okay, can, can I have a motion for D and E two, please?
I move for discussion and action on to unrestrict, excuse me, to reappropriate $660,492 of general fund, fund balance and transfer. And and then under E, discussion and action to reappropriate $900,000 of school capital projects fund, the fund balance to pay for school departments, Portsmouth High School partial roof replacement project funding commitment.
Second.
Okay, so we can discuss all of these for discussion.
Okay, Mr. Duro.
Okay. As you know, Town Council on April 14th approved a plan to fund the project, the high school partial roof replacement project. That plan included $900,000 of school department funding. In your backup, you have the memo. I understand it's a little small and hard to see, so I'm gonna walk you through it. But everything that's in there is really three things tonight that we need to do. First, requesting that you unrestrict $340,000 of general fund, fund balance that is currently restricted for an OPEB trust. The district does not have an OPEB trust, has no plans to establish an OPEB trust. Unrestricting this fund balance will make it available for the roof project. And just so everyone knows why we have an OPEB trust restricted balance, back before the teacher pension reform. Our, our OPEB was over $10 million. This is back in 2010.
OPEB stands for?
Other Post Retirement Benefits, essentially retiree health. Once the state did the pension reform, it raised the retirement age of teachers to the point where unless you were grandfathered in and had enough years, you could never retire before you hit 65, which means you cannot take advantage of our retiree healthcare. So naturally, this liability has come down from $10 million to about $2 million over the course of those 15 years.
And can you explain how we currently cover those costs now so that there's no financial peril for us getting rid of this?
Sure. So right now, again, it doesn't make sense for us to have a trust, so we're, it's called pay-as-you-go. So every year, we budget for our retiree healthcare costs in our operating budget. That has varied over the years. The last couple of years have been right around $60,000 to $75,000. And again, that's covered in our, in our regular budget that's approved by the school committee and Town Council.
Sorry, does anybody have any question about the, the OPEB and moving the OPEB money? Okay, next.
So if, if, after taking this action, if you approve that, there will be $1,010,492 of unrestricted fund balance in the general fund. So item D, which is second, I'm requesting that you reappropriate $660,492 of the general fund unrestricted fund balance and transfer this $660,492 to the school department capital projects fund. After taking this action, there will be $350,000 remaining in the general fund unrestricted fund balance, which is what we often refer to as the rainy day fund. Additionally, there will be $943,453 of fund balance in the school capital projects fund after deducting the expected necessary amounts to complete the Hathaway septic tank repairs project, which you've previously approved. And what I estimate will be required to fund architectural engineering OPM costs for our next stage one, stage two, five-year capital plan application with RIDE. And then finally, item E, I'm asking that you reappropriate $900,000 of school capital projects fund balance to pay for the department's PHS partial roof replacement project funding commitment. By paying for this project out of the capital projects fund with all these money moving around, we will be eligible to apply for housing aid under an emergency approval. Again, only, only projects funded either through bonds or capital fund are available for housing aid, which is why we're moving this money to the capital fund.
So I, that's a really important point that housing aid is only reimbursed if it comes out of a capital fund, right?
Or bond proceeds.
So currently, our policy says if we do have a surplus at the end of the year, it goes to the capital fund. And that way, it can be there for these kind of things. My only question I have with this is we also want to keep 1.5% in the rainy day fund. After we do this, we're not going to have 1.5%. Is it your recommendation then that we suspend transferring money to the capital fund? If there is a surplus, that it should go back to shore up the rainy day fund? Or are we better off to keep a lower rainy day fund and shore up the capital fund? I know that's a little bit off target, but it, since we're lowering these balances so much, it makes me a little concerned.
Yep. No, I totally get what you're saying. So I would say the policy is written right now would tell us to keep any surplus, if we were to have one, in the general fund rainy day until it reaches 1.5. And then anything above that is what gets automatically swept. So unless we change the policy, it will stay in the, to the extent we do have one, it will stay in the rainy day fund until it reaches 1.5%.
But if we had an emergency where we had to cover more than what would be remaining in our capital fund, we could always sweep it from the, the general fund back into the capital.
We can always do exactly what we're doing tonight. Yep.
All right. Other questions?
Has the work started yet on the roof?
I, I don't think so. I ask about it several times a week. I know they've been out there. We're obviously trying to line up their materials. They are on board, I think, with starting on the area over the auditorium since there's nobody below it. I, you know, as of yesterday, hadn't actually started yet, but it should any day, hopefully.
Isn't it, isn't it important that we complete at least $500,000 worth of effort by the end of this fiscal year in order to qualify for the emergency reimbursement?
No, it doesn't have to be completed. You normally get one year from the date of approval of the emergency approval. So as long as we get that approval before June 30th, we have a year. Then we can apply for a second $500,000 emergency approval in July, because that's technically a separate fiscal year.
Right. So ultimately, we'll get $400,000 back.
Assuming we get, assuming we get the approvals.
Right.
Yeah.
And then that goes back to the town? Yeah, and their funds, yeah.
I believe that, yes, it will go back to the town.
Okay.
If I further up in this memo, is the town contributing towards the roof?
So, so what they call the builder impact fees. So those, that's, you probably heard me talk about that before. So that's a separate fund, separate from the town's general fund and their unrestricted fund balance. They're providing us with a little over $572,000 from that fund to make up the difference between our $900,000 and those builder impact fees. There's an additional, a little over $496,000 that the town is providing. Those three things together equal the bid price. But they've also provided a contingency in case we needed, if we come across things when they rip the roof off that, that we didn't know about and we need change orders. They've committed $393,800 to that contingency if needed.
Hopefully not needed, which they wouldn't have to spend, but if it's needed, it's there.
Yep.
Thank you. Other questions? So Attorney Carol, can we just have one vote? One vote on, on items? So I would like a, a motion to approve.
For all three of the items relating to the repair, the replacement of the roof, partial replacement of the roof.
Items, C, D, and E for a total of $900,000.
Correct.
Let me have a second.
Sorry, second.
Okay. It's a lot of money, but we need a new roof. All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Seven zero. That's the most money I've ever voted for in one vote, I think. A lot.
Yeah.
I move for discussion.
Can we just say one thing? Thank you for putting this all together in a very clear memo. I mean, I, I know I joked about the size of it, but that did really set it out there. So thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Next.
So as mentioned, we do have a district goal around this item because we know where we are with our current five-year capital plan, which was essentially the health and safety items related to the 2021 bond. We'll be completing the last of those projects this summer with the bathrooms at Portsmouth Middle School. However, that plan itself technically has one more year left in it after we're just, we're finishing the projects early. So we have to have an approved five-year capital plan on file with RIDE in order to, to stay eligible for that housing aid reimbursement. So we, we will be covered for a while, but we need to start the process of what our next five-year capital plan is going to look like. So we did put together a suggested timeline. These will cover all of, this would cover all the stages for us from start to finish, getting us to you know, the, the construction fees of whatever approved projects there are. You will see bonding mentioned. It's, it's if necessary. Again, the, the, you know, the bonding for the last capital plan was the finance plan. Our previous capital plan, five-year capital plan, the, the town did not bond for it. They agreed to set aside a certain amount of money each year to fund it. So those are discussions that we would have to continue to have. However, if, if needed, in order to support this timeline, you, you see there that all of the dates that we would need to keep in mind and even around a bond if needed. So, Mr. Duro, did I, what did I miss there?
Thank you. Hit on everything. I'll just expand a little more and go through the timeline. As Dr. Kenworthy said, Bench, Benchmark Four, a goal, the facilities goal in our strategic plan will be completed if you approve this proposed timeline tonight. Again, as a reminder, our current plan ends this summer with the completion of the PMS bathroom projects. Remember, only projects that are part of a RIDE-approved stage two are eligible for state housing aid, which is why it's important to have a plan in place. For those of you on the committee that have not gone through a stage one, stage two application process, I can tell you that it is not a quick process, as you can see from that proposed timeline. It does, I'll mention this again, it does require both school committee and town council support. On several occasions, town councils need to vote to support our submissions. And also, this process is very expensive. During stage one, what they call local education agencies or LEAs go through a process to form, to identify their facility improvement needs. Typically, LEAs conduct facility condition assessments, prepare demographic projections, provide educational programs for each school. Through careful study of these factors, LEAs attend a comprehensive understanding of the district-wide capacity, enrollment trends, and a lot, and the alignment of existing facilities to the educational program being offered in each school. Once approved by RIDE, LEAs begin stage two. So stage two LEA work, LEAs work with an architectural and engineering team to propose solutions to the needs identified in stage one. This process requires the development of schematic design documentation that can be used to provide dependable cost estimates. These scope descriptions and the accompanying costs are the basis for establishing a budget and project descriptions that are forwarded to RIDE's School Building Authority and the Council on Elementary and Secondary Education for consideration and approval. The proposed timeline, I will now walk you through, was developed in conjunction with the district's current OPM owner's project manager, Paragon Group, and I thank them for their help and support in putting this together. As you can see, on the scheduled preparation for stage one, application process begins actually now. First thing we need to do is procure an OP, a new OPM, which can also be Paragon, but this is a new project. So they would quarterback the entire thing for us. I issued that RFP this morning and it's out there. And an evaluation team will, will review all proposals received and recommend a contract award to the school committee, hopefully by mid-June on this proposed timeline. At the same time, we will start the process to select an educational planner as required by RIDE and an architectural and engineering firm, if needed, to perform a facility conditions assessment. I'm hoping the RIDE facilities condition assessment that was recently completed will be issued in time, although they've told me that it may not be, so we may have to do our own.
Can we delay this? Because that would, that's a lot of money to do the assessment plan.
Well, we'll have to see. Delaying this would potentially put us a whole nother six months out. These, these dates that we have to hit are pretty tight already. So if we don't have a facilities assessment to start, we could, this whole timeline would probably not work. So either they're going to be able to provide it to us or we're going to need to do our own. So either they're going to be able to provide it to us or we're going to need to do our own. But delaying it means this whole timeline is unapproved at that point. So we can make that decision when we go out the bid and we'll see what we get for facility assessment costs. And what I'm hearing from RIDE, I'll stay in contact with them. So the stage one process will begin in earnest with the submission of a letter of intent to the school buil- building authority this summer. The statement of interest again must be signed by the superintendent and the town manager. Throughout the whole process, RIDE will want to see that the school department and the town are on the same page as as to priorities, size, scope, and funding of the proposed capital plan. All of the required stage one documents and analysis will be developed starting in July and will culminate in a stage one submission to RIDE by mid-September. During October and November, we will work with RIDE to address any comments or questions they have, and we would expect to receive final approval from RIDE by mid-December. We are proposing an early start to stage two beginning in September prior to receiving stage one approval because the timeline between stage one approval in December and stage two submission in mid-May, two thousand twenty-six, is extremely tight. During March and April, we will work with RIDE to address any comments and questions and would expect final stage two approval in mid-May. Should the approved stage two plan, which would have needed a vote of support from the town council, be large enough to acquire the issuance of a bond, the enabling legis- legislation would need to be passed prior to June thirty, two thousand twenty-six. And a town referendum would then need to be take place in November, two thousand twenty-six. I've included a proposed stage three and stage four schedule for your information, but I'm not asking you to approve that tonight. The timing and sequencing of the construction phase would be totally dependent on the size and complexity of the projects contained in the final five-year capital plan. Any questions on the plan?
Can you remind me what the education planner does?
Our points. Sorry.
What's that?
Nothing.
So the the education planner will work with us to make sure that there's an alignment of our like a program of studies to the facilities that we have and whether or not we have the facilities to support the teaching and learning that's happening in our schools. They also help us facilitate, if you remember, working with the public to get priorities and feedback. Remember the dinner we had at the?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking about because I thought that was a waste of time.
Yeah, we're not going to do that again. But those are the type of activities that they help us kind of pull this all together.
Do we does RIDE tell us who we have to take as an educational planner or do we pick?
Just that we need one.
Yeah.
We'll issue an RFP.
We'll pick OPM first and then whoever the OPM is we'd work with for educational planner, architect, yeah.
Yep, there's there's actually a state MPA out there that RIDE did so that there are pre-approved people we needed to move move quickly. Or we can issue our own RFP.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions, but anybody else first? So how much does this process cost? A ballpark?
Stage one and stage two, at at least half a million dollars.
And the 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 construction assessment, my understanding was that RIDE was providing this construction assessment to all districts so that they wouldn't have to pay that, right?
So RIDE still has the old Jacobs report that's out there.
That ten-year-old one?
We can use that. That's ten years old, so I don't know how relevant it is.
Probably not good.
They conducted a facility assessment over the last several months.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, around the state. Last I spoke to them when I was starting to think about putting this together for this approval, I was told that they were hoping that that report would be available in May. I followed up with them last week. They're telling me now, no, it's not going to be available in May. I think it's been delayed. They didn't give me a date, but they said they recommended that we include a facility assessment in our RFP as an add alternate to make sure that if they're not going to issue in time, we have another avenue available to us if we don't want to use the Jacobs report, which we could do.
How much would the the add alternate cost? Wouldn't it if I'm remembering our last assessment, like, didn't we have to have like an engineer come out and look at all the buildings and? It wasn't cheap, right? Or was that part of the Jacobs?
We used the Jacobs report last time because it was it was not that old. So I I don't know what a facility assessment would cost. I I don't think it's going to be crazy. We only have four schools. So I I personally wouldn't think that that would be cost prohibitive for us moving forward.
And how much of this do we I'm blanking. I shouldn't be blanking on this, but how much of this did we include in our budget for next year?
This is all money that I encumbered in our capital fund.
That's why you were saving part of that for the capital.
When I determined how much we could afford to pay, I knew we were going to go through this process, and so I reserved that to the side, my best estimate.
So the pros of rushing this through, which, I mean, we are kind of working on a very tight timeline here, is that if we don't have a new one in place, we get no housing aid for anything we do, right? So if septic systems fail, whatever, then we, you know, the town is out the thirty-five percent or forty percent. I mean, that's the big reason we need to get this done now.
And yes, and and while this is a tight timeline, this basically means we can start construction on any approved projects in two thousand twenty-seven. So I mean, if we push this out, we're talking two thousand twenty-eight, so. Again, all dependent on the funding mechanism, whether it's capital fund, bonds, size of projects, you know. That's why I'm not asking for stage three and four approvals tonight because we don't know what we're going to get approved.
So if we approve this timeline, what happens if the schedule shifts? You don't meet these deadlines.
We we manage to it. We'll give we'll give you updates. I mean, I wouldn't come back for, you know, approvals again and again and again. This this would just set our direction and we'd start marching towards these dates.
They're internal deadlines, really. I mean, it's not like a couple of them are, we have to get it in by RIDE by a bunch of days, but a lot of them are internal deadlines we need to hit.
September fifteen is the deadline for stage one, February fifteen is stage two. Everything else is just helping us manage to those dates.
Yeah, and it's either, so as we delay, it's either a September fifteenth date or a February fifteenth date. We're always aiming towards one of those. There's nothing in between.
Right.
Either of those as if we delayed.
Yeah, there's urgency. All right. Any other questions, concerns? All in favor? Any opposed unanimous seven zero?
We have discussion in action on the distance learning plan for school year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
Dr. Kenworthy.
Thank you. This is an if necessary plan, so it allows us to do a few things. If we needed to, for a weather emergency, have a full distance learning day. Typically, we try to build in, you know, a a snow day in our school calendar. But particularly with June nineteenth now, we we try to make sure we're wrapped up before then. So it would allow us to use that for the whole district if needed. This year, this past year, we although we didn't have a a weather day, if you recall, I did have to use the day for one day for Portsmouth High School when the roof really started to reach a critical mass there with the fire alarm system. So Dr. Viveros really takes the lead on putting this together. I don't know if she wants to say anything else about it.
The plan is very similar to the plan that you've approved the last two years. Our schools worked together to put a plan together for each of the levels, and I feel confident that it's a good plan. Thank you.
Yeah, so if you were to approve it, I have to just attach the school committee agenda on the date it was approved, and then we would collect the rest of these signatures and it would head off to RIDE.
Check quick question. When we the modeling went thing, we I didn't realize we hosted a modeling event. We hosted exactly before the roof leak.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not sure if if. No, they did one this past year as well. Mr. was talking about, yeah.
Right, they early. It was earlier in the school year and they used classrooms, but not before that, like, critical time of the of leak.
Okay, same as pretty much same as last year. All in favor? Any opposed unanimous seven zero?
Move for discussion and action on the budget transfer to over five thousand dollars.
Second.
Mr. Diro?
Okay, so you have the report. These are the fourteen transfers since the last time you voted on one of these items totaling four hundred ninety-eight thousand, thirty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents, which sounds like a lot of money, except the vast majority of these are just Yuko County-related. So for example, look at the first entry, number one oh three. This budget transfer, all we're doing is removing eighty-eight thousand dollars from the psychologist and speech pathology salary lines to the exact same contracted services lines to perform the exact same duties because we couldn't find employees to replace the people that either left or went out on leave. Same thing with entries one twenty-eight through one thirty-one. Here we're transferring a hundred and twenty thousand dollars between out of district tuition lines. They're all out of district tuition. It's just what schools did these students go to? So again, it's the same purpose. I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has one on a specific transfer.
Yeah, makes sense. All right, all in favor? Any opposed unanimous seven zero? Thank you very much.
For discussion in action on the out-of-district transportation resolution.
Second.
So this is the pretty much the draft resolution that came out of the Transportation Study Commission. The big thing here is that it it seeks to reduce the size of districts so that there would be shorter routes. It still provides transportation to all local students, to their CTE programs within the region. It still provides transportation to private schools within the region. For Portsmouth families, pretty much nothing would change if this bill gets passed, except that they would be using some of the savings from this shortening of districts to create a fund that would help offset the cost of long-distance, high-cost statewide transportation of homeless students, students in foster care, and those in high-cost special ed programs. And that could really help Portsmouth because we don't have any of those programs right here in our region. So of course, we're having to send them across the bridge and to other places for a lot of that. It like high-cost special ed, it wouldn't probably pay for all of it, but there might be some funds that would come back to help Portsmouth. But this would really help other districts in the state. Notably, Bristol Warren would be a huge beneficiary from this because they have to transport kids all the way up like north of Providence. So I would encourage people voting in favor of it. It's probably not going to pass this time because the Senate Education Committee Chair nixed the hearing on it because I think they were getting some parents that weren't happy with it. But it should have a hearing so that at least you can hear what the pros and cons of everything is. It will have a hearing in the House, probably within the next week or so. So we'll see, you know, this may be a a two-year process thing where it it takes a little longer. But I think it's worthy of support.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. The point that says mindful impact on private school students age sixty-two, thirty-six. I think that might, when I looked. Sorry, because I looked up House Bill sixty-two, thirty-six, and it's Rhode Island Data Transparency and Privacy Protection Act. So perhaps that number sixty-two, thirty-six, is that definitely accurate?
That's the bill that came to Tim Duffy from Terry, that's Terry Courtfriend's bill, I think.
I couldn't, I I'm looking at it, but it's like a different, it was from a prior session. Anyway, and then the other, did you say that there is a presentation in backup on the Transportation Commission?
I didn't pull it up, but those two studies got put in backup, right? Oh, previous, previous meeting backup. That was the last reports. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed unanimous seven zero? Thank you. Next? Oh, Karen, Ms. McDate.
Thank you. I move for discussion in action of policy J I C J, student use of cell phones and other personal electronic devices.
This is the final read, and we do vote on this one. Yes. Congratulations to the policy subcommittee for getting it through. All in favor?
We're going to have a discussion.
Yeah, I didn't I didn't think there was any. Go ahead.
I do want to update everyone that the Senate just passed Bill seven hundred seventy-one, which is the policy on use of personal electronic devices in school. And the House has had a hearing on the same language. So I think that we'll go for a vote pretty soon. And today's vote in the Senate had no opposition. And if this policy passes, it says personal electronic devices on school grounds and during school-sponsored activities for the entire day and physical access to a personal electronic device by students during the school day is included. So we might be having to revisit our.
Yeah, I think I read it takes effect a year from now. So I don't think it would take effect for fall. And I think I've heard this will probably pass. I think it's going to be hard for them to have the outside-the-classroom events. I don't know how they're going to do that, so I don't know if anybody's really testifying on that. But I think, like we've mentioned in this committee before, this gives us a year of getting people used to the idea. And then if it's state law, it's state law, but we'll have to wait and see what happens.
Yeah, no one testified in opposition at both the House hearing and during the Senate.
And I I would like to say, obviously, I support the bill, the bill, the policy. But regardless of what happens at the state level, if that, you know, does or if it obviously passes, we'll have to do another policy. But if even if it doesn't pass, I would like to just review our policy in a year, kind of see where we're at with this current policy we're putting forward for the fall and consider even at just the district level, doing a a more restrictive one if if it seems like that makes sense.
Policy subcommittee can keep reviewing it as much as they want. Okay, all quickly, all in favor of passing this policy? Any opposed seven zero? Okay. Next.
All right, I move for discussion in action to eliminate policy seven one one seven, six one one seven, sorry, early dismissal or cancellation of local schools. Should we do this in conjunction with?
Yeah, I was just saying it's we, the language has been updated in the next policy that's on for discussion, including the policy and the protocol. So we felt like there were two policies. We felt like we didn't need both of them any longer.
So do we need to? To vote to eliminate? Six one one seven or should we?
I think we should do L first and then come back to K. So can I have a motion for L, please?
Yeah, L is just discussed only because it's second second read.
But if people are upset with it, we don't want to, do we want to actually eliminate a policy before this goes through final read? I mean.
Yeah, have the discussion. I don't think there's anything too controversial here.
Right, go for it, right. So I move for discussion of policy E B C D, inclement weather or other emergency.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right.
So this is, as as Dr. Kenworthy was just saying, there were there was an old policy that went into a lot more detail. What we discussed in our meeting and what ended up happening is that the policy itself became much shorter, much more general. And then there was, but there's a protocol that goes into detail about the the procedures that are going to be followed in these circumstances. So that the protocol is something that can be changed and updated as needed. And the policy, as policies usually do, provides direction, but not a lot of specific details that are likely to change.
Makes sense. Should we have the motion for K then be eliminate policy six one one seven upon final approval of policy E B C D?
Sure.
That would make sense, okay? Can you accept that amended motion?
Sure.
Second?
Second.
All in favor of eliminating policy six one one seven upon approval of E B C D? Any opposed seven zero? All right, M?
All right, M.
I move for a discussion of policy G B G A, which is, uh, staff health and protection against blood-borne pathogens. Do you have a second?
Seems like kind of an odd one, but okay.
We need a second.
Oh, we need a second, okay, seconded.
All right.
Why would they have, like, pick this as opposed to?
It's a, it's a policy that goes back to, uh, the nineties when people were particularly concerned about HIV.
They're requiring policy, we're supposed to have, Miss Segwierd noticed that we had, we had something on record that seems like it was never adopted. We did find some old language, but, uh, she updated, uh, the policy, uh, that you have in front of you.
That is HIV, hepatitis B, okay.
Yeah.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense. No, so no action for this, any questions, concerns? Does it require people to, I'm just thinking of, God forbid.
We have, we have to do an annual training every year for staff, and we, we've been doing, as most districts do, so that language is captured in just all of the do's and don'ts around.
Okay.
Bodily fluids.
All right. Um, I was just thinking, in case of a school emergency, you know, how they have the stop the bleed program and everything like that? Is that covered in here?
Uh-huh, I'm not sure if stop the bleed is in here.
No.
Okay, do we need it? Oh, the handling of samples and stuff, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
All right, um, thank you very much, uh, on to reports, Mr. Diro?
Hey. All right, so you're in, uh, possession of the March year-to-date financial report. At this time, I'm comfortable that we will, uh, end the year with a balanced budget, um, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Uh, this is the first time you've said that, well done.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
It was a nervous year. Yeah. Thank you, we just received that report. Um, and you're reporting under budget transfers, a budget transfers under five thousand, please?
Yes, uh, this report, uh, is submitted for your information only, there were a hundred and thirteen transfers under five thousand, most of them for roughly a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars. They total forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents, uh, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there's a specific, uh, transfer someone's interested in.
Seeing no questions, all right, before we adjourn, um, upcoming meetings include the District Building Committee meeting of May twenty-first, is there anything getting voted on at that meeting?
I don't think we have any action items.
No, no, it's just, uh, updates.
Updates, great, and then we have our, um, school committee meeting on May twenty-seventh, and we have a location TBD because?
Uh, the twenty-sixth is Memorial Day, so the town council will, will be meeting on the same night, we will be at the high school library.
Sounds good, all right, we'll see you at the high school library. Thank you so much for coming, and may I have a motion for adjournment, please?
Move. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous seven zero, thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you.